Take the roll, please.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Now, if you may stand and play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were two sets of minutes coming into this meeting, one of January 2nd, one of January 16th, 2018. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of January 2nd, 2018?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Wise, second by Vice Mayor Pardee. Is there any discussion? Any corrections to these minutes? If there are none, Ms. Thomas, will you take the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
We also have minutes dated January 16th, 2018. Has everyone had an opportunity to review these minutes? Is there a motion to accept the minutes of January 16th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council, rather by Vice Mayor Pardee, second by Councilman Wiseman. Is there any discussion? Any corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, if the clerk will take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda are comments from the audience. Are there, does anyone here wishes to address the city?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you would state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bert Seber. I live at 2645 Witten Road. I've been resident of Utaah for over seventy years.
My God.
I'm pleased that the city has updated the website and that there's now a calendar in there of the Service Department holidays. But this didn't help my neighbors on Washington Boulevard and Laurelhurst and East Carroll and in the area where the Monday pickup is because they had their rubbish out sometime Sunday, from Sunday night to Tuesday. So how can we solve this problem? I would suggest that maybe we mail, mail this calendar out with a letter to the people in the Monday pickup area or possibly post signs like you do when they're flushing hydrants that due to the Monday holiday, the service department will pick up on Tuesday. And please do not put out your rubbish until Tuesday morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seber. Are there any further comments from the audience? Well, if there are none, then we will... Was there one? I guess not, okay. If there are none, then we'll move to the reports and communications from the mayor. I'll go over this briefly. I know we have a long agenda this evening. First thing I want to announce is the retirement of Police Chief Stephen Hammett.
No.
Police Chief Stephen Hammett has officially notified us of his retirement. His last day will be March 16th, 2018.
For real?
I've been aware since late last year that it was Chief Hammett's intention to retire in calendar year 2018 and secretly I'd hoped it'd be several more months away. But after the chief's thirty-one years of public service, I know there comes a time to make a move like this one. In the short time that I've been here, it is evident to me how Chief Hammett has professionalized our police department and moved it forward to better our city. University Heights has been well-served by his strong leadership and service. Chief, on behalf of the residents and myself, I thank you for that. I do not envy the person who will follow you and have to try to meet, much less exceed, the high standards you have set. But to that end, and having discussed this with the chief, I will be considering all of our lieutenants and sergeants to identify an interim replacement. After appointment of that replacement, we will advertise the position and seek applicants both from outside and within. I will coordinate this with Chief Hammett, but at this time I anticipate naming an interim police chief sometime during the first full week of March or at some other such time as to most effectively transition command of the department. Next item about John Carroll University. Tomorrow, several of us will be meeting with JCU President Jean Colleran and several other members of JCU administration. Scheduled to attend that meeting with me are Law Director Luke McConville, Prosecutor Michael Astrud, Interim Fire Chief Bob Perko, and Community Development Coordinator Patrick Rogan Myers. It is our mutual hope to put city-university relations back into good stead. Next, I'd like to mention citizen committees. We've had substantial interest in the citizen committees and have had dozens of residents sign up. We will continue to accept names of interested citizens. In the meantime, I have named Mike Sears to be the Citizen Chair of the Parade Committee to work on the Memorial Day Parade with our Special Project Coordinator Lisa Marneig for this year. The three of us will be having a meeting on Wednesday before we convene a full meeting calling upon the several residents who have expressed interest in the Parade Committee. Next, I'd like to mention the Fair Housing Commission. Chapter 820 of the University Heights Code of Ordinances provides for a Fair Housing Commission. This commission is a panel of three who will be working in coordination with the law director to hear fair housing complaints. We do not presently have this commission constituted, and I am looking for people to serve on this commission. I will be accepting statements of interest with resume on a continuing basis until three candidates are identified. However, it is also my goal to have three candidates submitted to this council for confirmation by the next meeting. That next meeting would be February 20th, due to Presidents' Day. One more item about the meeting regarding Swensen's. Originally, our city was going to host a meeting tomorrow, February 6th, between myself, Swensen's CEO Jeff Flowers, Beechwood Mayor Martin Horwitz, and Beechwood Vice Mayor and Campus Road Resident James Posh. Tomorrow's meeting proved to be inconvenient for our Beechwood guests, so after some back and forth, we have agreed to meet on February 19th. We do know it's a holiday, we chose that day regardless. So, there are other subjects I could raise at this juncture, but for expediency, most of them relate to items on the agenda, so I will reserve comment on those items until we reach those items on the agenda. So, next on the agenda, we have a presentation of resolution in honor of Black History Month. I think all council members have a copy. This is a draft with revisions suggested by Councilman Sims. I will read it now. Resolution number 2018-13, a resolution honoring Black History Month 2018. Whereas the story of African-Americans is one of resilience and perseverance, tracing a people who refused to accept the circumstances under which the greatest majority arrived to this continent, who resisted and struggled through slavery, emancipation, Jim Crow, the modern civil rights movement, and onward through today. And whereas 2018 marks the fiftieth anniversary of the assassination of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., whose vision and advocacy for human rights and racial, economic, and social justice remain a worldwide inspiration for all peoples. And whereas Black History is American history, and in celebration of Black History Month, we celebrate both the unique aspects of the African-American experience in this country and the remarkable contributions of African-Americans to the nation and culture so that we may all carry appreciation, understanding, and celebration into the rest of the year. And whereas during Black History Month, we pay tribute to the contributions and accomplishments of past generations, and we affirm, we reaffirm our commitment to keeping the American dream alive for generations to come in pursuit of the righteous cause of a nation that is more just for all people, to address the inequalities and injustices that remain, and to the birthright promise of freedoms for all people that hold that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Now, therefore, be it jointly proclaimed by the mayor and resolved by the City Council of the City of University Heights, Ohio, that, one, we call upon all residents of University Heights to observe the month of February 2018 with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in celebration and recognition of Black History Month. Two, we reaffirm our commitment to justice and against illegal discrimination in the City of University Heights, Ohio. Three, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance of all legal requirements. And four, this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time allowed by law. We have a formal printing of the proposed language with signature lines for myself and for all members of council should be passed this resolution. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Yes. Moved that we adopt the resolution as it is addressed and to the fact, to the point that you spoke to.
Okay. There's a motion by Councilwoman Cameron, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second by Councilman John Rock. Is there any discussion of the motion? If there is none, if the clerk of council would call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. I have a paper that we can all sign and we'll... And we have a blank for Mr. Erdl, and we will contact him. We know we couldn't be here today. Okay, the next item on the agenda is for a presentation from Mark Harris on Kiwanis of the Heights. Mr. Harris, are you here tonight?
Yeah.
We will pass up that item on the agenda for now and move to item C. Presentation and consideration of proposal for rebranding the city in the amount of $30,000 from Kathy Froman, Guide Studio. Is Kathy here?
Yes.
Great. If you would approach the podium, please.
All right. Thank you for having me here. I had the opportunity to talk to a few of the members of the city back in December just to help provide an overview of the process of community branding, what that looks like, what that involves, and what it actually really means. A lot of, I think a lot of people think of branding as creating a visual logo and mark, and that is part of it. But essentially, what this is, what we're here to do is to help guide the city through a process that uncovers who you are and how you can communicate it to your residents, to the businesses, and to your surrounding communities. Part of that process is community engagement. We would walk through a series of workshops and focus groups where we could gain input from residents, from businesses, from stakeholders within the community to understand what is your core purpose? What does it mean to be a member of the community of University Heights? What are your distinct advantages and what makes you different and unique from your surrounding communities? So that you can talk about this and communicate this better. Why do you want to do this? This will help you in retaining your residence. For some communities, this helps to build a stronger economic base by creating the correct key messages in terms of bringing in new businesses. It helps to overcome perceptions that are incorrect about your community so that you're actually communicating about them in the right manner. And we do look at visually how you represent yourself and what does that look like. Guide Studio is a branding communication and wayfinding consultancy. We are located in Shaker Square, so we're fifteen minutes away. I, myself, had lived in South Euclid. I just recently moved, but I was in South Euclid for fifteen years. So, University Heights was my community too, being a neighbor. And the work that we do in branding and communications is solely focused on communities. So, while we don't use our branding expertise to market and promote businesses, we use it to help communities think a little bit like businesses so that they can be more economically stable. Some of the work that we've done, actually, our neighbor in South Euclid was one of our clients, and it continues to be a client, so we worked with them in 2012 to develop their brand and we've been continuing to work with them year after year in doing some of their signage, gateway in their city, as well as working with them on a marketing communications plan currently. We've also developed branding work for the City of North Olmsted. We have developed identity and brand for downtown Kent, downtown Lakewood, and large comprehensive brand and wayfinding programs for other cities throughout Ohio. Any questions?
Thank you for the information that you shared. If you could, just very briefly, give a sense of what exactly you did for South Euclid?
What we did for South Euclid? So, we went through the process that I described with you, where we conducted workshops and focus groups to help develop, and this is all going to be like branding and marketing lingo, but they're core, they're core foundation pieces for communication when you're communication, communicating to large public audiences. So, we helped create positioning for them. We helped them clarify and understand who their audiences are because contrary to the idea that you want to talk to everybody in the world, you do have to kind of focus and prioritize depending on your objectives. And those objectives shift from year to year, so we look at all the different audience groups. We then developed their logo and identity for them. We helped launch that brand. Part of that launch was doing a website landing page at that time. We're now, we're starting to talk to them a little bit about exploring how they're communicating a little bit more about their community on their current website. And then, after that, sort of incrementally throughout the year, we developed the signage program that is part of their gateways within their city.
Has any of that signage been implemented?
Yes, all the signage that's up, the green signs that you see in South Euclid, like around those perimeter.
I'm sorry?
It's okay.
I couldn't quite hear you.
Oh, yeah. No, the signage is up. So, that has been done probably over the course of the last two to three years. And then, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I am familiar with that. And, Mayor, my follow-up question would be... Actually, two questions.
Sure.
My first follow-up question is, in terms of your branding approach, especially the visual branding, which is what I asked about the signage, where do you get your inspirations from? Do you look outside of...
From you guys, actually. You know, part of that exploration is understanding your character and personality as a community, so we do have to engage with your community members and with your citizens. We also look at the physical context of your community. So, we look at, you know, the streets and the architecture and the makeup of the community to help sort of create those ideas. We do go through a few exercises too, because in our minds, we're not, we're not creating your brand, we're trying to uncover it. So, we will take you through even some visual exercises so that those who are participating in those workshops can kind of mark, and we can begin to see stylistically and visually where the community is leaning in terms of those visuals and what they really don't like, and that also helps provide us direction on that. But as a design firm, we look at a lot of different things. You know, we also, we look at your competition because we want to differentiate you. You know, while South Euclid is our client, we would approach your work unique to you, and we would want you to stand out and be unique as compared to your neighboring communities so that you can stand up for what it is that you are most proud of and what you want to promote.
So, and my last question, Mayor, is are you familiar with like the neighborhood branding in the City of Cleveland? And would any of that apply, or how would you overlay any of that? And I, actually, the City of Cleveland itself has implemented a Cleveland brand approach. So, what do you think about all of that?
I'm very familiar with that, and actually, I was on at least a few of the committees revolving around reviewing steps within the brand, also steps within the wayfinding program that they implemented downtown. As for the neighborhoods in Cleveland, we've actually developed some of the brand work for those neighborhoods. Or we have implemented those brands within signage and wayfinding programs. So, very familiar with all of those and how they developed and the messaging behind them. So, it's a very similar process that we're going to take your city through, but the outcome will be unique to your city. So, just for example, we did not create the brand identity for Ohio City, but we did the signage and wayfinding program within Ohio City. Same with Tremont. But North Coast Harbor, which is one of the districts within the downtown, we developed the brand and identity for North Coast Harbor.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I was fortunate to be able to attend, and I really enjoyed your presentation. It was comprehensive, and it's clear you do a wonderful job. Are you the only firm that does this kind of municipality or community design and branding?
In northeast Ohio, yes. It is our core focus. Our wayfinding work does span into institutions, public venues. So, most of our work, we call it workplaces and people traffic. So, it's really any place that's trying to attract and communicate to people. So, when it comes to wayfinding, we'll do work for colleges and universities and hospitals to help navigate people through place. But when it comes to our branding and communications work, the core focus of our work is all cities, municipalities, districts.
Okay. I recall when you were talking, you talked about competition when you were responding to RFAs. So, that's for wayfinding as opposed to...
Yeah, typically, you know, we do compete against marketing and advertising agencies. Their focus is not as in-depth as ours when it comes to community work. Working for communities is different than working for a product brand or a business-type brand. You have different challenges. I think the level of engagement that we have to do with communities and the fact that you don't have, you know, a core, like, ownership that you respond to for those decision-making makes it a way far more unique, far more challenging when you're doing some of the community work. And I also think the fact that a lot of cities, especially the size cities that we work with, don't necessarily have marketing communications people on staff. This is something that people within the organization, a lot of them are wearing multiple hats. And we have focused our work to help those type of organizations be able to use these tools as efficiently and cost-effectively as possible.
And how long has Guide been doing this?
We have been in business, last year was our twentieth year. So, yeah, we've been around for a while. We were, previously, our name was Studio Graffiti, and last year, in our twentieth year, we made the name change, so.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight to present.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for coming in and presenting the proposal for us today and for presenting the presentation a few weeks ago, so it was very helpful. This is a very important pursuit that we're doing as a city. There we go. It's long overdue. It's outlined in our master plan that this should be done, so we're taking the first step to do this. Any particular project? I'm pretty loud, eh? Still hearing me? Any particular project that we've looked at in the city? We've always said, boy, I wish we had a comprehensive strategy for the city for streets, gateway, finding, signage, you know, and the look and feel of the city. The look and feel of the city we have now is dated. It's been generated decades ago, and it's time for a refresh. We've talked about that. But again, anytime we've had something come before us, we always said, let's table this until we have a comprehensive plan. So, this is that opportunity to have a comprehensive plan. I'm very excited about it. Now, the work had begun between the two committees of Civic Information and Governmental Affairs Committee. We actually started with looking at the Cedar Taylor District. So, now this gives us an opportunity to look at all the districts, business districts in the city, and the residential components as well. So, again, it's very important. Guide Studio, a female-owned business, has, is very unique of this, and that's why I've asked that you provide the proposal for us today. And again, it's our goal in the city to offer work to female minority businesses in the city to give them an opportunity to do work in the city. So, I'm glad that we're going to achieve that goal if this is approved. We are going to create a committee. I don't know what it's called yet, but it's an ADPO committee to do this process in which we will have stakeholders from the city, whether they be employees, dressers, council members, people from the community, residents, business owners, all of our boards and committees of the city so that people have a say. We've already actually surveyed the city a year ago, so we'll look at the results of that survey to see how that plays into this and whether or not we need to continue asking those questions we're talking about in the discovery process. So, I'm very excited to kick this off, and I hope you all consider it, this proposal today.
Councilman Wiseman?
Oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Froman, I'm glad you came back. It's, I'm glad we don't, you know, there's too far away, so it's not such a bad drive. So, I think this is a great idea. I share the opinion of Mr. Rock and some of my colleagues. But somebody looking at this from the outside might not understand sort of what's going on. If you could just give us a couple minutes about how the branding and the wayfinding in particular can help the city in terms of helping the businesses in the city and then helping people who might want to come to the city just to give us some kind of practical effect so we'll know there's a money that we're spending is going to sort of actually have an effect on the city. That'd be great.
Sure. Actually, what's unique about a lot of the communities in this area, you are, you're all very tight in here. South Euclid, Lynnhurst, University Heights, Shakeraise, everybody is very close together. And it's sometimes hard to understand when you're crossing over between those cities. And it's not that it's always about a constant competition, but there is, there is a degree of pride that each of these communities have. And when you have an identity that people can all get on board with, can easily stay, like, even if it's in the form of a tagline or an elevator pitch or something that is easy to say, I live here, this is what's unique about it, this is why I love living here. When you see some of the signage go up, it shows there's a quality and a care that's being taken within your community. It does shift perceptions. And you don't even have to have necessarily negative perceptions. You can just have "bleh" perceptions, and it can shift, you know, towards the more positive. And when those perceptions shift, then there's, and that level of quality and care is being recognized, especially from a business perspective, then other, other businesses are going to look at your city and consider you in a very different light than if that care and quality was not being shown by the city government.
Councilman Sims?
So, Mayor, we don't have an additional question. I really appreciate your presentation. And I am familiar with your company by your former name.
Oh, yes.
I didn't even see it under here. So, but what I did want to note, because I think it's important, I did consult with our law director, and he basically informed me that because this is a personal service contract...
Professional services.
Professional service contract that we don't have the requirement to solicit additional quotes. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that point was made for the record because we generally are excited to see more than one, be it... we generally are excited to see more than one, be it indefinitely, we work to at least solicit additional fields. So I just wanted to, wanted to make sure that that was well understood. And I just wanted to also agree with the comment that Councilman Rock made with respect to the importance to this community of reaching out and finding ways to work with women and minority-owned businesses.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again for coming, it was a great presentation. The one thing I did, just wanted to mention that council might have forgotten was that there has been money allocated for this type of project, so in the budget already.
Is it?
It's.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So are we, there, so we, are you talking about the money for Cedar?
I just put it into the budget a few days ago, but it's in the budget, right now it's at $25,000, I got to increase it to $30,000.
But just so I understand...
The gateways.
We had put, we had put money aside for Cedar Taylor specifically, I think it was $30,000.
And going forward for four years. So every year there would have been $25,000 going forward.
Right, and we created a fund, right, for...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's more than that.
Is there any further comment or question for Ms. Fromm about this proposal or about this proposal generally?
Just in terms of the timelines, Mr. Mayor, there are several timelines in here. The first phase one is eight weeks, the next phase is eight, those are cumulative, those timelines?
They are cumulative. So typically, these processes, they're, they don't have to take years, but they do take a few months. And we do look at each of the phases incrementally. So the first phase is the strategy phase, it's where we're really looking to understand who you are and go through that discovery process, so that's eight weeks. Typically, it's typically six to eight weeks, so around two months. The design process for developing the visual identity can be around that same timeframe, sometimes a little longer, and a lot of that really is dependent on the client and the review process that that goes through. Design and anything in the aesthetic realm is always a touchy subject and it is always one of the things that is hardest to get consensus around, so we do take you through exercises to help get through that. But typically, that could be about another two-month process. And then we would want to work through with you what it would look like to actually implement this program, how, like what is that period of time? How are you going to do it? So how are you going to tell the world that you have a new identity and new brand? How are you going to plan for the costs that do come into play when changing your identity? On, you know, where are you changing it on? How much are those things going to cost and how can you phase that in over time? Because that is something you have to plan for and we don't want to leave you hanging with, you know, a large dollar amount to consider how you're going to make these adjustments. So it's, you know, it's typically about four to six months, you know, and that's, you know, going at a pretty good clip. Again, it really depends on the community. We've had some that can move very fast and we have some that really take their time, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great.
Anything further?
Well, I will make the motion to approve, I see, consideration of the proposal for rebranding of the city in the amount of $30,000.
Okay, motion by Councilman Rock, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilman Weisman, is there any, is there any discussion or debate? Councilman Weisman.
Just a couple of points, thank you, Mayor. First of all, this council has been very eager for some time to engage in a process where we have community involvement and we have some, some not necessarily rebranding, we weren't thinking about it, but in terms of some kind of marketing program in the city, so much so that we approved about half of this amount of money just for stamps for people to get the survey for the master plan, that didn't get used. And, and for the record, I probably would pay about $5,000 just to remove the cornstalks from the different signs that we have around the city, so it seems to me like, I mean, I like, I like the presentation, I think the city's in need of this. This doesn't, this seems to me to be a reasonable, reasonable amount to spend for something like this, something that's sorely needed.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, we have a motion on the floor, Ms. Thomas, we take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardisi?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are the mayor's appointments to the city's Board of Zoning Appeals Commission. I look out in the gallery and I see that the, the three appointees that the mayor has selected are present, being Linda Johnson, Ari Jaffe, and, and Mark Goodman. I'm sorry, excuse me, thank you, Kevin Goodman, pardon me. Yes, I believe the, with, I believe all of councils received information about the three nominees with your packets. As far as how we proceed on a confirmation and vote, this is new, how this is being done, we have a revised ordinance where instead of the mayor simply appointing appointees, they are now up for council approval. They're here to be asked questions if you see fit, if you want to probe them in depth, an executive session may be in order. Otherwise, if there are just some basic questions or if you are satisfied with the information you've received, we could accept a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I read through the resumes and I looked at those whom you have sought to appoint. I think we have a talented group, we have people with significant experience when returning after a point in time, and I would be happy to make the motion approving the mayor's appointments to the city's Board of Zoning Appeals Commission.
I'm just going to ask that you do them one at a time, please.
One at a time, okay. Well, then I would make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Linda Johnson.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to appoint Linda Johnson to the BZA by Vice Mayor Pardee and a second by Councilman Sims. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk would take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardisi?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
And I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Ari Jaffe to the Board of Zoning Appeals, approve the mayor's appointment, excuse me.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Ari Jaffe to the BZA, motion by Vice Mayor Pardee, second by Councilman Sims. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardisi?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
And finally, I'd be happy to make a motion approving the mayor's appointment of Kevin Goodman to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the appointment of Kevin Goodman to the Board of Zoning Appeals by Vice Mayor Pardee, second by Councilman Sims. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk would take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardisi?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Congratulations, all three of you, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, if we could take this out of order, I understand we have present representatives of PC Alternatives, so item R on the agenda, motion authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with PC Alternatives LLC for IT service and maintenance for the various city departments at an annual cost not to exceed $9,000. Bill, could you speak as to this point?
It's...
Mr. Shan, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. It's become quite apparent to us that the city has no one to service or maintain its IT equipment. When there's a problem, as we've done in the past, we've been forced to scurry and get PC Alternatives into City Hall to fix or rectify the problem. And that is quite evident. So my colleague and I went out and we got three quotes to, to perform IT service and maintenance for the city. PC Alternatives was the lowest price that came of it. They are charging $9,000 for 100 hours of service. They, they know our equipment, they know how we're configured, so we thought that they would be the best suited to, to perform these functions for the, for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Shan. Is Mr. Robinson is here or, yes, yes, everyone should probably meet Will Robinson. And do you have somebody here with you or is it...
Yes, I brought one of my coworkers, Justin.
Excellent, Justin, yes, right, thank you, yes. Just maybe a few words to the council, we've all met you, I met you my very first day here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman, for having us. Yeah, we, we're very happy to continue performing work that we've been performing for several years unofficially as a licensed contractor with the city, if that's such an entity, but we service several cities in the area, a lot of neighboring cities. I live in Richmond Heights, one of my clients is Richmond Heights, we also service Highland Heights and Valley View, Coyote Heights, Newburg Heights, we've done work with the city of Cleveland, about 14 cities altogether, that including Cleveland, where we've done some training work. So we have done municipal IT work for a lot of years. I've been in business for 26 years, I'm the owner of the company, and we've lived in the area for that entire time and we've worked with all sorts of departments. We do work for police departments where we support programs like Sundance and TAC, we work with fire departments where we support firehouse software and emergency reporting, we work with the building department where they provide programs for certificates and, and certifications, and we use a product called BDS, or there's another product called zoning certificate. We work with finance, we work with bill, with EGOV, products like VIP, and city government, we've done mayor's court work and so forth, so we're pretty familiar with most of the software and hardware that cities primarily use on a day-to-day basis. We performed sort of an audit here at University Heights and made several recommendations on items that would modernize and update our networks here. And just a couple of them is that the entire campus is kind of disjointed because the networks are not connected, there's no central servers, there's not real good security, a lot of the passwords and credentials are very weak, we could easily be compromised by hackers or ransomware attacks. We've done a few things in finance to protect against ransomware, but not throughout the city. Another one of our concerns is that we're not aware of any IT disaster recovery plan. We would highly recommend the implementation of disaster recovery, we've done that for several cities, we've done IT audits for several cities to implement security and emergency responses in the event of any sort of natural disaster, as well as protecting against outside nefarious activities on the internet and otherwise. So we, we would be honored to serve the city of University Heights in official capacity. We've worked here for many, many years, supporting all the departments. We didn't have the honor of working with the chief of the police yet, but we've certainly worked in every other department and we're, we appreciate your privilege, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Before you leave the podium, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Robinson?
Sure. How you doing, Mr. Robinson?
Very good.
And we, we have not met, so...
Okay.
This is our first opportunity to meet, but I do know that you've worked with the city over the years. So my question is, with 100 hours of work, do you think that that is sufficient to undertake the services that you provide?
Not really.
To this city?
Well, not, not for everything that I've outlined, and I, actually, there's, there's more things I could have outlined, but the 100-hour block was a suggestion, I'm doing that with a few other municipalities where they buy blocks of service time, it's, and we discount that as, as opposed to our normal à la carte, à la carte hourly rate. So it's a, it's a sort of a deal for the city that allows them to budget a certain amount of money and have IT service that they can just call on demand and not worry about a lot of additional invoicing.
So this is primarily for, as it reads, maintenance?
That's correct.
Okay, and the disaster recovery plan, as an example that you mentioned, if it was incorporated into this base contract, how much of the contract would it take?
Well...
30 hours, 40 hours, 25 hours of work to create a disaster recovery plan?
It would, it would depend, it would depend on where we were in terms of rolling out some of the other potential projects, like in terms of unifying the city. I, for instance, I made a note to suggest that several departments were using different operating systems, there's no standardization with virus protection, there's no standardization in terms of office suites, some are on Office 2010, some are on Office 2013, some people are using XP, some people are using Windows 10, we're just all over the place. So probably even before I could submit a legitimate estimate on consolidating or implementing a disaster recovery, I would just like to kind of get us into the 21st century and get everybody on the same page and just sort of standardizing software and hardware across the city.
And I worked under this?
We would, we, exactly, under the 100 hours, the 100 hours includes just service in general, whatever, whatever the city calls us to do, we'll do it. The only thing that's excluded from the 100-hour service block would be hardware and software or any sort of special project, like if, if the city agreed to install an exchange server, which I strongly suggest, right now we're using multiple email hosting companies, and that was a major problem that we worked with the city around the end of December. Just standardizing something like that, those major projects like that would be extra, which we could negotiate at the time, but the 100-hour block and any subsequent 100-hour blocks or 50-hour blocks, whatever implement the city chooses, we would just provide that during our normal course of service.
Thank you so much.
Any further questions or Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for coming in. It's, you know, it's becoming obvious to me that the city has been in need of a lot of computer upgrades and tender loving care and watchful eyes for a while now, and it's, it's, it's interesting, it's all coming to light now, I think it's great that we're taking care of it. You're here today, though, I think for just sort of like a general, you, you did work for the city for the, on the first couple of days of this administration, isn't that right?
That's correct.
And could you just describe sort of what, what occurred and how you came in and what you were able to do?
Okay.
Just so everybody has an idea of that.
Absolutely. So I was here for the last couple of days of the previous administration and just sort of helping the former mayor get information off of her devices so that we could get everything ready for the incoming mayor, and that, that was, was our, sort of the challenge in that we were trying to find out where drives were, where, if there were dumb drives involved, what data should remain, what data should go. I think we were on the phone with the law director for, for quite a while there on a Saturday afternoon, but, but we, we got all of that squared away and we got everything moved over and, and of course, I was here on the first day of the incumbent mayor and making sure that he was all set up and that everything was working and that he could just immediately be able to get email and normal computing services. be able to get email and normal computing services. So, primarily just making the transition smooth and uneventful and keeping everything working.
Wasn't there some, like, there was some kind of a...
Crash.
Firewall, I believe.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We had experienced the city hall and experienced a power interruption of some sort a few days before that, and it knocked out the router. So, the router, which supplies Internet service throughout the building, had to be replaced. There were some switches that were defective, some cabling had to be done. It was kind of a, not a real major disaster, but it was certainly a major interruption where we were unable to work until that was done.
Right, right. So, this 100 hours, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
My other thing is that this 100 hours, you're quoting us, this 100 hours, this is up-and-running stuff that we're talking about. You're going to keep us up and running?
Correct.
Keep it safe, keep it separate, nobody can hack in, that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other things you're talking about are other ancillary issues that you're uncovering, but you have an expert eye in terms of this, so you know what kind of machines we need, what software we're looking for, that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, I think that's great. I just wanted to point out for council that the three quotes were included. PC Alternatives, that's your shot, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
So, that quote was 9,000 PCS, which I think is a different company. That was 12,500 for 100 hours, and then ACE is $9,500 for 100 hours. So, it looks like they're all sort of comparable. The ACE was a 40-hour quote, but I was able to use my math skills, such as they are, to determine it. So, I just wanted to point that out. This is clearly the lowest one, and it sounds like you already have a relationship with the mayor and with the administration at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for presenting this. Is this 100 hours 24 hours a day? Is it only business hours? If you could just explain, you know, if an emergency comes up, are you on call?
Very good question. And one of the things I'll remind you of, when we were working at the end of the previous administration, we were here, it was a Saturday, and actually, we were planning to come Monday, it was January 1st. So, we don't have additional rates or additional pricing for evenings or weekends. So, we just, just a flat rate. So, the 100 hours would pretty much be whatever you needed. I mean, obviously, we would prefer to do it nine to five, or whatever normal business hours are. But, you know, in the particular case, you know, when Bill reached out to us, it was a weekend, they were trying to close the month, they closed the year, just kind of a critical part of the year, and we certainly made concessions and helped them out any way we could.
Thank you.
It was a holiday weekend, too.
It was a holiday weekend, too.
Christmas, I believe.
Well, New Year's.
New Year's.
And then with that, the preceding mayor's term was going to end at midnight, and to the extent that there were things that needed to be taken care of on her clock versus the next one, Mr. Robinson was here to assist with that. Okay. Well...
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, yes. Councilwoman Cameron?
Yes. Mr. Robinson, thank you so much for all that you've done for us. I get the sense that this contract is a little bare of a couple of bones, but we'll see what we can do on that. I'm just curious. I really don't understand the whole gizmo of why my phone works, or laptops, or books, or any of that. But could you just give me an idea? I'm not asking you for a quote, but I would like to have an idea about what is the expense of a server that would be appropriate for our size of city? What would you be suggesting as a ballpark figure?
Well, we just bought a server for a couple of cities close by that were updating their services and their network for the new year. And for a city this size, let's say there were going to be 75 users altogether, that would include full-time and part-time employees, that would include interns that might come in and out throughout the course of the year. So, an average server of that rate would probably be between $5,000 and $8,000. That would cover supporting all of those users and providing some kind of security and the ability to have storage and backups.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think it's probably also worth mentioning that one of the reasons we are entering into an agreement like this is to formalize and normalize our IT services so that we are not, as we have been, operating on a run until it breaks basis and then scramble in an emergency to resolve things. The idea here is to improve the level of service here overall, and as Mr. Robinson has conveyed, by entering into an agreement, we are also getting a price reduction by the hour by having a normalized relationship as opposed to contacting him or somebody else on an emergency basis when emergencies arise.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Robinson? Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement with PC Alternatives LLC for IT services and maintenance for the various city departments at an annual cost not to exceed $9,000.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Weisman, a second by Councilwoman Weis. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Thomas, will you take the role?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Item E. Ordinance 2018-08 Appointing Kelly M. Thomas as Clerk of Counsel effective March 1, 2018 to be heard on emergency. This motion is introduced by Vice Mayor Susan D. Pardini. Vice Mayor Pardini, would you like to speak as to it?
It is council's desire and interest to reappoint our clerk of counsel. We are proud to have her return to work with us, and I'm happy to make the motion to reappoint Kelly Thomas as the clerk of counsel.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint Kelly Thomas as clerk of counsel by Vice Mayor Pardini, second by Councilman Rock. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, if Ms. Thomas would take the role? Oh, wait one moment.
On suspension.
First, on suspension. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and on the main motion.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Okay, welcome back.
Great.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Item F. Ordinance 2018-09 Authorizing Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan to appoint and enter into contract for 2018 with Jeremy Iosu of Harvey Avens and Iosu Company LPA as the city's labor council in an amount not to exceed $35,000, and this is also on emergency. Basically, I have sought the council on behalf of the city of Mr. Iosu to represent us in labor negotiations going forward with the union representing the service employees as well as the fire union. I would note that Mr. Iosu could not be here this evening because he is at Loraine City Council where they are voting to approve a CBA that he helped negotiate with employees in the city of Loraine. He will be happy to join us at the next meeting so that council members can meet him and he can meet you, but in the meantime, we are anxious for him to get to work. So, there is information about Mr. Iosu and his firm, as well as several of the other city and government entities that he has worked for doing similar services. I've contacted some of the other cities. I've spoken with Mayor Rittenhour, mayor of Loraine, mayor of Burn of Parma Heights, and the mayor of Valley View as well to get their input with regard to Mr. Iosu's work and approach. And I happen to believe that following some of the contentiousness that occurred this past year with our unions, that a fresh start, a hit of the reset button with respect to the city's approach with our unions and bringing somebody new in to symbolize that fresh start and to effectively give us that fresh start was certainly in order. We certainly do thank prior council for his work. However, the change in direction was one that I believe was of merit at this juncture, and I believe Mr. Iosu is the right person for this task. So, with that in mind, I hope that the council will approve and authorize me as mayor to enter into the fee agreement so that he can get to work on negotiating with the fire union and with Local 860, who represents the service employees union now. And to that end, Mr. Iosu has already set up appointments with myself, with Mr. Corney and Mr. Pacella in the service department, together with interim chief Perko, and has also reached out to the fire union's president, Lieutenant Kanter, towards the ends of getting to work. But right now, everything that's been done has been preliminary, not substantive, while we await formal approval to enter into this fee agreement. Thank you. Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm in favor of this. I think whoever our labor council is should have a partner in our mayor. I think it's very important that the mayor and the labor council are not only in lock step, but have a good relationship with each other. I have some questions about his presentation. The references that Mr. Iosu lists there are, it's like eight different cities represented here. Are these cities, if you know, Mr. Mayor, cities where he currently does work as labor council now or has had experience in the past?
I know some of them are in the past now. I don't believe that all of them are current, and these contracts are periodic, so he wouldn't be actively working with all these cities and negotiations all the time. I did ask him before, I asked him to bid this, whether he had the capacity to take us on as an additional client for these purposes. He indicated that he did. So, I'm taking him at his word that he has the time and wherewithal to take us on as a client and give us the attention we're looking for. And to that end, I've also had discussions with him of what we are looking for in our labor council, and I believe we are on the same page.
Okay. And you mentioned a couple of current mayors. At this point, they're, I'm assuming, gave him positive reviews and had things to say about him?
Yes. Yes. They had glowing recommendations and really were under no compulsion to tell me anything other than what they actually believed.
And there's a pricing schedule at the bottom, and I think these numbers are a lot lower than what we were paying for our labor council. I want to say we, our last charge for labor council was like $150,000 or $180,000 just for the negotiation end of it. Does that sound good to anybody?
I don't know if Bill has those numbers handy. I can tell you...
I don't have them handy, but that sounds pretty high.
Yeah, I can tell you that the last bill from prior council was for over $13,000 for work from October to the end of the calendar year with a reference of a payment of $10,000 for the prior bill. And I can also tell you that prior council charged $225 an hour, and Mr. Iosu charges $175 an hour. And while that was not the reason I went with Mr. Iosu, it is a fortunate upside benefit that we will be saving $50 an hour on council.
Okay. Perhaps the number I remember maybe was like a total legal department cost, maybe?
Yes, yes.
And not just for labor. Okay. Nonetheless, you're, Mr. Mayor, comfortable with this choice, this is what you would recommend for us?
Oh, absolutely. I would not have brought it otherwise.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, no. Sounds good.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Vice Mayor Pardini, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any further discussion?
This is on emergency?
Yes, I believe so. Yes, it is on emergency.
On emergency.
So, yes. Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? So, Ms. Thomas, if you'd call the role first on the suspension of rules.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
And on the main motion? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
And on the main motion? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Okay, next is Item G. Ordinance 2018-03 Authorizing the mayor to appoint and enter into an agreement with Joseph Archuni Care of GPD Group as the city engineer, and this is on second reading. Who has this? Okay. Basically, Mr. Archuni has agreed to continue his services as city engineer for another year, as well as extend the previous rates from 2017 into the new year 2018. Mr. Archuni has been the city engineer for our city for, I believe, since 1990. Yes, and we are very happy with the work he does for us, and we are not, at this time, inclined to look elsewhere, and we should go ahead and formalize our arrangement. It is, at this point, perhaps a bit belated, but there's still plenty of 2018 to go, so...
Please.
Okay, so, whereas...
Oh, no, no, no. I just have to read my title only.
Thank you. Okay, so, introduced by Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to appoint and enter into agreement with Joseph Archuni Care of GPD Group as the city engineer. Do we have a motion, or is there any discussion?
Is this on emergency?
No, this is a second reading. We read this at the last meeting.
Does it want to affect immediately?
Well, probably shouldn't.
It probably should.
Okay.
So, what do I mean?
Well, then that would be second reading on emergency so that we don't have to wait 30 days for it to take...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, okay.
So, what it means is, we should add an emergency clause. There should be a motion to add an emergency clause, the emergency being the need to implement the contract immediately. And then, the approval would be on emergency as amended. So, we do have to formally amend the agenda item?
Yes.
No. Or just the motion itself that the mayor... No, you need to make a motion to amend the ordinance by adding an emergency clause and clarify what the emergency is. In this case, the emergency would be the need to have the contract go into effect immediately. And after passing that motion, you would move to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we amend the ordinance to include an emergency clause for the purpose of the contract going into effect immediately.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to amend by Councilman Sims, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, seems then we need to call the role first on the amendment.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Okay.
And then technically, because we've amended the ordinance, when we adopt, we will want to suspend rules and adopt.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to suspend rules and adopt?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Weis, second by Councilman Sims. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk would take the role on the suspension.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.[1797.61]
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Welcome back, Mr. Archuni. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
One small point.
Yes.
You know, I know that this is a very long agenda.
Yes.
I feel bad because we appointed the three members of the BZA and none of us really said anything. I don't think it's because we don't know them or like them. I think it's because we were so interested in getting through to item number S, which is farther than we've ever gone in the alphabet before. I just want to say, I don't know if I speak for my colleagues, but I know each of the candidates personally and professionally, or Jaffe, Governor Goodman, Lady Johnson. I've seen you all work before. And personally, the thing that I love about you all is that you care a lot about the city and you have reasonable heads on your shoulders. And I know that the BZA, as newly constituted, will be in good hands. I'm glad you guys are going on. But sitting here, I felt bad that nobody really said anything. And I don't want you to think that nobody really recognizes what you're doing or cares that you're on BZA, we're just sort of, I think, hyper-focused tonight. But congratulations, I think.
Well, yes. And Councilman Wiseman, if I could do you one better, because of the length of this particular agenda, the vice mayor and I had discussed that at some point, some juncture of this meeting, we would take a brief recess just to take a break, stretch our legs, get a drink of water, what have you. And we could use that time to personally say a few words to Mr. Jaffe, Mrs. Johnson, and Mr. Goodman, who I will try not to ever call Mark again. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
If there's a motion to take a five-minute recess for those purposes, I'd be happy to entertain that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for five-minute recess. Any discussion?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Fast.
Five minutes. I'm showing 816.
I'll set Mr. iPhone stopwatch and we'll see if we can keep that.
Very good. Kelly, we call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fordy?
Aye.
Can we do this by affirmation or?
All right. See you in five minutes. Next item on the agenda is letter H, Resolution 2018-10, adopting the countywide all-natural hazards mitigation plan for Cuyahoga County, 2017 update on emergency. Chief Perko, would you? I'm sorry. One moment.
Can we move to resume, move to resume regular session?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to resume.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to resume regular session by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Cameron. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fordy?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next item on the agenda is item H, Resolution 2018-10, adopting the countywide all-natural hazards mitigation plan for Cuyahoga County, 2017 update on emergency. Interim Fire Chief Bob Perko, if you would please speak as to this resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. The county all-hazard mitigation came out of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. The Cuyahoga County put this team together for any kind of natural disaster that may occur all over the county that was previously approved by the Ohio Emergency Management Agency. And they took a hazard assessment back in 2016 of all the cities involved in the county, including ours. We reported no changes in our hazard plan from 2016 and back to 2011, which is the last time that they took an assessment. This also allows us to use the county city notify system to call back residents if a natural emergency occurred. This could also be correspondent if we were to reestablish a team like the search team again, where they would work together. The Disaster Mitigation Act requires that this plan meet the FEMA standard set forth in 2004, and then they reassess it every five years. And so this plan is for the 2017 to 2022 county all-hazard mitigation plan. So I recommend that we approve and enact the legislation to approve it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Yeah, I would simply add that this was last considered in 2012 before the previous mayor and also considered on emergency simply due to timing with respect to when the plan came out versus when we are supposed to respond to our, with respect to the adoption. And so here we are. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
I would move to approve or to adopt the countywide all-natural hazard mitigation plan for Cuyahoga County, 2017 updated and on an emergency.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Councilman Sims, second by Councilman Wiseman. Is there any discussion? Okay. Any questions for Chief Perko? Okay. Seeing none, Kelly, would you take the roll first on the suspension of rules?
Mr. Sims? Aye. Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fordy?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
And then on the main motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Fordy?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. Was it attached to the materials, the plan? Is it too voluminous to?
It's too voluminous to have included in a printout. It's several hundred pages, but we can get you the link if you'd like to see it.
Wonderful. Or is there a copy at City Hall in case we want to?
Yeah, I mean, I saved electronically. I didn't print it out.
Okay. But it's a link you could pass around?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
It's also on the county website, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item I, Ordinance 2018-11, repealing the moratorium on medical marijuana testing laboratories, amending codified ordinance, chapter 874, entitled Medical Marijuana Operations, amending codified ordinance, chapter 1284, entitled Medical Marijuana Dispensaries, and amending codified ordinance, section 1266.02, entitled Use Regulations, and the schedule there, too, to permit medical marijuana testing laboratories as a special use on first reading. This is introduced by Councilwoman Wise. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we passed the medical marijuana ordinance, we put a moratorium on the testing laboratories just so the law director could do some due diligence and some research on what other cities have done with testing laboratories and if there was anything that we needed to be aware of. Essentially, the testing laboratories, we want to allow testing laboratories in the city. There is a permit fee associated with these testing laboratories. We decided in committee that it should be $12,500, which was, I guess the high end was $25,000. And we didn't want to have a barrier for these laboratories. It holds the same, testing laboratories are the same in terms of how far away they need to be from a school or a library or a place of worship. So again, in the city, there's only one area right now. And this does not include the college because colleges have their own set of, I guess, rules that they need to follow and they're kind of their own separate entity, correct?
Well, any federally funded medical marijuana registration is precluded from state or local regulation under federal law. And then that preclusion has been included in the state law. So what that means in English is the federal government has said that any medical marijuana testing funds that they distribute, which typically would be to a state university, but doesn't have to be, cannot be prohibited under state law.
Thank you. And I want to thank the law director. I know he took, you know, did his due diligence and really researched this ordinance. So thank you.
The one thing that I would add from the committee meeting is just that in looking at the medical marijuana regulations that relate to all of the medical marijuana entities, dispensary, testing lab, cultivator, processor, they are extensive. And so under state law, there are extensive security provisions, chain of custody provisions. There are very detailed provisions that relate to disposal, particularly with respect to any testing laboratory. So for that reason, our regulation that relates to laboratories is very similar to the earlier regulation that we enacted in connection with dispensaries.
Okay. Anything further? All right. Well, then, we've had our first reading of this ordinance and it will presumably appear on the next agenda. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item J, Ordinance 2018-12, amending codified ordinance, section 1475.04, entitled Vacant Building Inspection and Issuance for Purposes of Requiring the City to Obtain the Consent of the Owner to Any Vacant Building Inspection. This is on first reading, introduced by Councilman Mark Wiseman. Councilman Wiseman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's going to be the first meeting of the year we adopted a sweeping change to the vacant property registration ordinance, which was chapter 1475, I think, University Heights. The essential part of that, of the change is that when a plaintiff in a foreclosure case knows that a house happens to be vacant and abandoned while the foreclosure is pending, there are some reporting requirements with respect to that building to the city. And then there were requirements on the plaintiff to actually do work after the city inspects the property to make sure that while a foreclosure is pending, the house does not fall into disrepair. One of the items in the ordinance was brought to my attention by the law director in that as passed or as adopted, it gave the city the right to go into houses, on the inside of the houses, to check them out, to investigate if they were vacant and abandoned, if there were problems. As the council and the mayor know, we've had problems with houses, several houses before that were in foreclosure and abandoned. But the law director indicated that would be better if we added the requirement that the city would go then to Shakera Heights Municipal Court and seek permission or establish a case at least that there was, that the city had a reason to go into the house and get an order from the court to actually go into the house. So that's what this, that's what this change is.
Yeah. And just to flesh that out a little bit, my concern is in response to some case law entitled Baker versus the City of Portsmouth, in which an appeals court has ruled that in connection with the rental registration ordinance, that a municipality cannot enter into someone's dwelling without their consent unless they have a warrant. That's consistent with Fourth Amendment law kind of across the board. So what the courts have begun to say in Ohio is if you don't have the consent to enter the home, then you'll need to go to a municipal court and seek an administrative search warrant, demonstrate that you have probable cause to conduct an inspection, and receive your warrant.
And it should add that much time to the process, but it will protect us, which I appreciate the law director doing on a continual basis. So that's the, that's the change that we're recommending here. The new, I don't believe this section we have is actually redlined. I can't, can't tell you exactly. This was, this did come up in building committee and was unanimously voted out to be recommended to council to make this change. So I'm trying to, I think it's section D.
D, yeah.
The entire section D. Now, the new section added will be, it's 1475.04, new section D. An owner shall have the right to withhold or his or consent to an inspection hereunder. In the event the owner withholds consent, the building commissioner shall seek an administrative search warrant from a court of competent jurisdiction for the purpose of conducting the inspection contemplated in this ordinance. Do we need to add language in it that says, or is otherwise not available? Or does that work to say withholding their consent?
Yeah, I think either way. I mean, if you have a warrant, you have a warrant. If we can't perfect service.
Hard evidence we presented, court would be efforts to reach the owner. They're not available. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. If there's nothing further, then we will.
So I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt ordinance 2018-12, amending codified ordinance, section 1475.
This is first reading, so.
In two weeks. I recommend in two weeks that we do that.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Well, then, in two weeks, we.
I said I was hyper-focused before, though I really, really meant it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Next item on the agenda is item K, Motion Authorizing the Mayor to Seek Bids for Upgrades/Improvements to the IT and Phone Capabilities for City Hall and Upgrades to the Audio-Visual Capabilities for Council Chambers. Imagine there's several of us who could speak as to this point. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wise.
I think we heard from the gentleman before how in need City Hall in general is, whatever, we are, we're in desperate need for some kind of cohesiveness with our IT. And Councilman, Councilman Wiseman and Councilman Rock and myself for the past year have been trying to do some research for the council chambers. So we would have audiovisual capabilities where the audience and council could see what's being presented as opposed to a poster board and have streaming capabilities as well. So I'm excited that this is going to be happening and that the administration will follow through on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'll just echo that, that when an applicant comes, that the audience has the same ability to see the presentation as our council. So having the AV ability so that residents can see what's on the screen is very.
I also like to mention that the idea of streaming the council meetings is very important. It's hard being in open government. And full disclosure, I'd love to be able to get an elevator here one day, but until that happens, this is very important that we have the ability for all people to be able to see our meetings so we are as transparent as possible. So this is the first step.
Yes. Yes. Yes, yes. Mrs. Hubman, please. Go ahead.
And I want to, it would be great. But in the meantime, if y'all would just use your mics, that would be great, too. So they can hear what you're saying.
Yeah, a lot of you are not.
They're not even here. You sit back in here, Jim. We made the effort to come out, to be here. We'd like you courtesy to be here, yeah?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, too, am very excited that we might finally get the audiovisual opportunities in this room, which were actually originally brought forward by the city's citizen-led Technology Advisory Commission. We're finally about to activate that, but I'm very happy that we're looking at a comprehensive solution. My only question is, do you have any idea what the ballpark amount this would be? Any idea at all?
No. No. I hesitate to put a number on it because I don't want to, I don't want to either mislead or misstate or, yeah, that's a good point. Prejudice, the, you know, a potential particular plan, and there are several different ways we could go about it. I mean, we have an audio system in place, which is far from perfect. We've noticed that we've been struggling with it somewhat as we do the ad hoc videoing that we've been doing. We've been having some feedback issues pretty much all year so far. I've learned recently from our clerk of counsel that when she listens to these recordings in order to help her do the minutes, that there is a buzz throughout that she hears as she is listening to the proceedings. And I'm glad I don't have to listen to that buzz, but I don't like her having to listen to that buzz. So that is something that we will want to address most likely. I can say that as somebody who was recently on that side of the, of the room, that last year, when we had the presentation on Swensen's, all the boards were facing the council and all the plans that, that everyone was seeing, none of us in the back of the room could see. We could just imagine what was on the boards and, and just wish that we could see what the rest of you were seeing. And, and that's something that we should be able to rectify with this kind of setup, having screens that, where presentations are made both to the council and also to the rest of the room. And ideally, if we are streaming and/or videoing for posterity or these proceedings in the name of transparency, anything that would be on the screen would also then be part of that video. So if you were watching from home, whether it's live as it's happening or at your convenience, you should be able to see the plans that the council is considering without having to hunt high and low for them. So, any further questions, discussion? Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. By way of background, this, so, first of all, I think, I think, I think motion K is written in a way so as to allow the mayor to get quotes for these items separately or altogether. We've talked about the, the way it hamstrings the city if we happen to do things piecemeal, but the pricing and other things may be a reality that it has to be done, but certainly the mayor then can do the research and look at these things and figure out how to do it. I will note, excuse me, for the record, that the Citizens Tech Advisory Commission recommends that we update council chambers with video screens and streaming. I'm going to say more than three years ago, I know Councilwoman English was, was leading that meeting, and it predates Councilwoman Weiss and Councilwoman Rock on this council, even though they're really the two main drivers for this as we're pushing forward now. So this is not, this is not a new idea by any means, but I'm glad to see that the administration is looking forward to this. Certainly, it's, it just, it just looks so much like Mayberry when we pull up boards and the audience can't see anything but the back of an easel and when we're doing something. And in 2018, did not have video capabilities everywhere, I think is sort of, I think we're better than that. I'm glad we're moving forward on this. I look forward to doing that. And I, these guys are nice, I'm sure the guys working the cameras, but I look forward to you not being here, so we have an actual system in the council chambers that can take it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anything, well, is there anything further by anyone else before I add one more thing? All right. I spoke at the last meeting about the, several deficiencies about the phone system, and I'm glad to see that this is part of that same motion. And whether or not the, the bidding of the phone system is one of, of a much larger singular bid, a uniform, universal solution, or just a separate one that, that is, also happens to be covered by the same motion. We're out of extensions. We're out of, you know, we are at the mercy of the secondhand market for the phones that we use in this building. Because the, the phones are manufactured by Nortel, that company's been out of business for years. The phone system itself is over 20 years old. When, when people call me, I don't see what phone number they're calling from. We don't really have caller ID, per se. It's, it's rather, well, I don't want to say Mayberry again. I don't believe... Pardon?
Archaic.
Well, it is archaic, it is out of date, it is, and I think we can do better. And, and it all goes to, you know, to, you know, the level of service we're able to deliver our residents. When I get a phone call from a resident who forgets to leave a phone number, it's very hard for me to figure out how to call them back. And it should be a lot easier. So, do we have a motion?
I'd like to move.
Yes, well, then, do, then would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move, Mayor, that council authorizes the mayor to seek bids for upgrades and improvements to the IT and phone capabilities for City Hall and upgrades to the audiovisual capabilities for council chambers.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Weisman, second by Councilwoman Weiss. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Kelly, if you'd take the role, please.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Partee?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion authorizing the mayor to continue to incur the expense of securing an outside video record, recording company to videotape council meetings. Right now, Mr. Manders is, with an assistant, is here, video recording us. His company recorded us at the John Carroll meeting on the second, recorded us at the, at the last meeting that we had last month, and now he's here. And, and I have a $5,000 spending limit that I'm rapidly approaching. And I'd like to be able to keep videotaping these meetings, video recording these meetings, and putting them out there for public consumption. We've been getting nothing but great feedback, both as to the fact that we're doing it at all, as well as the quality overall of the, of the recording. So this is something I'd like to continue to do, but I need your authorization to continue to do it, or, you know, I can, well, I don't want to do this, but, but I want to be able to continue using Mr. Manders here. So I'm going to run up against the spending authority basically after this meeting. So if, if somebody would be so inclined to move to allow me to continue to contract with them to provide this service to the community, I'd be greatly appreciative.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
The motion as proposed is not very specific with respect to what that expense will be and for what period, so can you add any insight into that?
Well, what I'd like to do is, is going back to the previous bids for upgrades and improvements, one of the things I'm looking to do is something more permanent here in the room, where we have cameras and we don't have to have Mr. Manders bring his out, but we make the acquisition of, of the equipment that we need to film proceedings, not only of this group, but of any other group that we should later decide that we would want to film who meets in here. So this is not something I want to do on a continuing basis beyond any longer than necessary. I do intend to, per the last motions, begin researching and seeking bids for upgrades and improvements, including the equipment that we need to record in here. So I, I can't give you a firm date, per se. I didn't want to take the approach of my predecessor, where I started contracting with different companies every $5,000 and act as if I didn't have to go to you for approval. I'd like to be able to have some continuity with Mr. Manders and his company until that point, when we're ready to switch to a more permanent solution.
So in your estimation, when will we be switching to a more permanent solution?
Well, if I guess and guess wrong, and I'm sure you'll let me know. I'd love to be able to do it by this summer. I'd love to be able to get some bids in here. Today is, this is February already. So March, April, May, June, get the bids, get the equipment set up, get the training for whomever's going to operate the equipment, figure out exactly if it's going to be a live feed that then just streams, whether there's somebody that's going to be working the cameras, as Mr. Manders and assistant are doing now, in order to zoom on the appropriate person who is speaking, or if we're just going to let it go kind of unmanned and, and simply present the different feeds. I'm spitballing here, I admit it. But I would like to be able to do this sooner rather than later. I do consider what we're doing here, with all due respect to the good work Mr. Manders is doing, to be a stopgap, to, a bridge to where we do want to go.
Yeah, because I wasn't quite done, because I think that we're doing a great service as far as transparency and helping the public see how we conduct our business. But I do also know that we've implemented a number of, or plan to implement a number of things that will represent an increase in the cost of the city doing business. And so if you have just informed me that for the work that has been done, in the time that this company has been working for us, is about to approach the $5,000 range, then if we carry this through to the end of the year, we could easily be spending $30,000, $40,000.
We could, and...
And I think that we have to take note of that, and I would encourage that we expedite whatever we're trying to do, so that we are in a position where we are being as effective and efficient as possible with the resources that we expend.
I would agree with you, Councilman. I'll go with Mr. Rock first.
Okay. I will agree with my colleague, Mr. Sims, and then I think we should amend this to include a timeline, not to exceed nine months, just to give some assurances that this type of contract won't be exceeded, and I hope we can consider that. And then in nine months, if we still don't have the system in place, that we would come back for a vote for additional services for additional months.
Okay. Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, 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 too, think it's very important that we videotape what goes on here. I think, I think it's, it does a wonderful job for people who can't otherwise come to the meetings, and it also memorializes the debates that we partake in. I think sometimes the discussions we have are as important as the legislation that we pass. I would, I, I, too, would be comfortable with the, with the firm timeline. I would propose something like, if it's been, if it's, if we've had one month's of meetings and it's been $5,000, I would say, let's make it 60 days and $10,000, and then that'll make things go a little faster. I'm, I'm, I'm not so comfortable with spending, I don't think, this amount of money even to the end of the meetings until June, excuse me. And I think, I think we can sort of push forward as much as we can. I think it's wonderful, what, wonderful what these gentlemen are doing, but I see three cameras and more than one person. To do what we have to do in the meantime, I'm not sure we need to have all this stuff. I don't know how to make it, I don't know how to make it less expensive, if we can't make it less expensive, but I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, I think we need to put a specific timeline and a specific amount on this. And I would, that would be, I guess my recommendation would be $10,000 in 60 days, and then see how, how far that gets us and how far the administration has gone toward, toward the goal that we have.
Yeah, I certainly won't fault any member of council for wanting to put a reasonable cap on this, so that you feel that you are keeping the, you know, that you are fulfilling your responsibility to ensure that we are spending reasonably on this. What I can say about what we've expended so far is that nearly half of that $5,000 that we've spent or have basically committed to incurring up to this point was at the first meeting, because that was a very special setup, much larger room, separate sound that had to be brought in. We didn't have a sound system there, like we do have a sound system here, such as it is. And the, the first invoice was for $2,450. The, the second one was for about half that. So this third one, I believe, is going to come in just a little bit under that, because it's a slightly different setup and was done with economy in mind. So the $2,450 is kind of an outlier, because that was, that first meeting was a much different room, different setup, and more equipment had to be brought out, and more people had to be brought out. So I don't think we would be spending $5,000 every three meetings, but it is possible that we'd be spending $5,000 every four to five meetings. So...
So that's, that's heartening. So I don't know if anybody else has any, any ideas about what kind of cap we should be looking for.
And, and with that, we're getting editing services, and we're getting that product turned around to us fairly quickly, so that we can post it. And we've been putting it up on YouTube. So it isn't just the men standing here during the time we're here, there's a little bit more to it than that. Quite a bit more. Councilwoman Weiss?
Thank you. I would just like to add, I think a reasonable time is to the summer, till June. I think nine months might be too long. We just upgraded, at my place of business, the IT system and the phone systems, and if you have a company working on it, you know, once you decide the company and all the specs, which that honestly takes more time than the actual installations, you know, they got it done within, within three to four weeks.
Okay.
And I'll agree with Councilwoman Weiss, if we take this through summer, council takes a recess in July and August as well, so that kind of builds you in some extra time, if, if that's the case. I think we're moving pretty well on our speed here. We have vendors in mind that we've reached out to, so I don't see the problem in taking this through June.
Yeah, I, I mean, sitting here, it would be wonderful, I think, if we were able to get our plans, a vendor decided a plan in place, you know, and, and do what we're doing through June, and then when we come back from summer recess, have the new equipment in place and the new system in, in and ready to go. That would probably be both a suitably aggressive and yet not at a breakneck rate of speed way of going about this.
So if we kept, if we kept this, just thinking out loud, if we kept this at, at the second meeting in June, then by then, if we, if we, if we have by the end of the, the spring session of council bids, then, then they can, then they could work on it. If we approved something by the end of June, they can work on it over the summer, we can start in the fall with whatever new thing we're looking at.
That sounds like a fine idea.
Makes sense.
Yes.
So what you're saying is it's, it's settling around a little over $1,000 per meeting, so that's...
That's about right.
So what is that? That's about eight meetings, right? Am I thinking about that right? So that's...
Yeah, two, four, right.
Yeah, a little over $1,000, so, close to about $10,000, which is what you seem to be thinking, anyway.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah.
So I think you have a, you have a motion and a second on the table, I think, maybe...
That we need to amend.
Yeah, because the existing motion didn't have a time or...
Right.
And, and I think we could go with either. I would prefer the time limit, simply because...
Do we need to state a monetary amount? A monetary limit?
No. It's up to you. You can, if you want to.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll amend, this is number L, right? Amend letter L, move to authorize the mayor to continue to incur the expense of securing an outside vendor-record company to videotape council meetings, specifically with the company name of...
Mr. Manders, what is the name of your company?
Mandy Cam Video.
I'm sorry?
Mandy Cam Video.
Mandy Cam Video?
Mandy Cam Video.
Mandy Cam Video. Okay.
Oh, so, all right, so we won't do the name, just...
Okay, yeah, if we leave out the name, then...
The expensive, I'm sorry.
Did you withdraw your motion?
Let's clarify for the record that...
How about if someone else makes the motion? Let's do that.
Mrs. Cameron, you've withdrawn your motion, correct?
Indeed, I will.
Okay.
Thank you. So now we can accept a new motion.
So is there a motion to authorize the mayor to continue to incur the expense of securing an outside video recording company to videotape council meetings through June 18th, 2018? Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved, what he said.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Weisman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weiss. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Partee?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Item M, motion to grant the Cleveland Community, I'm sorry.
That was to amend, and that was...
Oh, you're right. Oh, I thought we, no, I thought we withdrew the motion.
She withdrew, yeah. No, that was the, that was the adoption of the motion.
Right.
So for purposes of clarifying the record, Mrs. Cameron withdrew her motion, and then Mr. Weisman made a motion, and Mr. Weisman's motion, I believe, was seconded by Vice-Mayor Partee?
No, by Mrs. Weisman.
Mrs. Weisman.
That was with the amended terms.
Yes.
Right. That motion?
That was the motion that I, that I read.
Right, through the June council meetings, yes. Okay. Very good. Then, we will now move to Item M on the agenda, the motion to grant the Cleveland Community MiCA a one-year extension of planning commission approval, originally granted on January 17, 2017, and approved by council on February 6, 2017, through February 5, 2019, regarding their application to build a 5,565 gross square foot MiCA in a U1 district at 2588 South Green Road pursuant to codified ordinance section 1274.05. Now, who would like to speak on this point?
I can speak briefly, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just to let council know that, as you may remember, the Cleveland Community MiCA came before planning commission and council for plan approval for their MiCA on South Green Road. Under codified ordinance section 1274.05, they had a finite period of time within which to pull their permits. They did not meet that time period, and so council's options are as follows. Under the ordinance, council is permitted to grant them an extension of their approval, in which case they would have an additional period of time within which to pull their permits. Or alternatively, council can decide that in the event they want to build their project, they would need to go back to planning commission. they would need to go back to planning commission.
Councilman Weissman.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was, I'm prepared to vote to approve this. The MiKFA people were here, but they had to leave because they had an appointment and the meeting ran a little long.
Oh, dear.
And so I'm remiss because I didn't get out invitations in time for the representatives to come here and be at the meeting. So I would, I'd be just as happy to table this so that we could bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. I didn't realize that they were here. I might have moved it up further in the agenda. So I apologize for that. Before we entertain a motion to table, I'm sorry, was there a motion to table?
No.
I said, "I'm prepared to make a motion to table." If council has questions, if they want the MiKFA representatives to come here and speak, would be perfectly reasonable if we could just bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Would tableing it put us outside that 12-month window from the original approval?
They're outside the window, and the ordinance isn't read in a way where you have to give your extension during that window. They're asking you for an extension of their approval. You have the authority under the ordinance to grant them that. If you don't grant them that extension, they would have to go back through the planning commission process.
So because they requested it, they're within the window, we could table it and still be safe?
Yeah, there's no real window. I mean, they are outside the window within which they can pull a permit. They cannot go to the building department and pull a permit right now unless they are given an extension by council, and council has that authority under 1274.05.
I guess if we could put it another way, Mr. McConville, we're not prejudicing them in any way if we were to table this...
That's correct.
...to another meeting.
That's correct, yeah.
We would still be allowed to grant the extension should we see fit at the next meeting, as surely as we could at this meeting. Councilwoman Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. If they have no, if they have no changes to their original plan, I see no reason to table it, and I would have no problem voting today to grant them the extension.
That's what I'd like to say. I don't know why we don't just vote on it. They came in good faith, but we don't see that there are any changes, so I'm prepared to vote on it.
Yeah.
I don't need to ask them to come back.
Yeah, I mean, only to that point, to the extent that if there was anything they wanted to convey to us, they still could. And there's nothing that has substantially changed, either with regard to the plan or with the surrounding community. And if after another year there were some reason that we would want to have them reapply versus renew, that would be something that council could determine at that point. My inclination, I would not hesitate to, if I were voting on this myself, to vote to approve this now. So.
So I'll make a motion to grant the Cleveland Community MiKFA one-year extension.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Ms. Thomas, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. DeAmber?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. Motion to extend is granted. Okay, next is item N, motion authorizing the administration to seek bids for the 2018 road resurfacing of Sillsby Road from Edgerton to Warrensville Center and for the acceptance of funding from the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works 2018 maintenance program in the amount of $36,000. Mr. Chuni, would you care to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This would be the continuation of the Sillsby project that went from Taylor to Edgerton last year. This would be Edgerton all the way to Warrensville Center, continuing the same program of resurfacing and replacing the curbs. We did receive notice from the county that they're granting us $36,000 towards this project. And I think we had it in our long-range plan to continue this in this year. And this is just the authorization and the seek bids, prepare the plans and seek bids.
Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chuni? Well, then, if I may simply say so, the $36,000 is for the materials itself, for the asphalt. On Sillsby, we've been replacing curbs. This does not include the curbs. Curbs would be at our own expense, but that would be something that we would want to continue doing as we have done on Sillsby Road. But it's wonderful to see the county come through for us here for continuing our work on Sillsby Road, so I was very happy to see this come in, and...
Their participation is only in the asphalt, the resurfacing part, you know, curbs and catch bases and things were on the road.
Well, that's all right. We can meet him halfway on that, so. If there's no further discussion, is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, a motion by John Rock, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Councilman Rock. Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. DeAmber?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next item is item O, motion authorizing Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan to enter into an MOU with Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District, the SWCD, and the Northeast Regional Sewer District, NEORSD, to provide the minimum control measure, MCM, for number-one public education and outreach, number-two public participation and involvement in the amount of $5,500. Mr. Pocorni?
I think that pretty much says it all.
Thank you.
This is a memorandum of understanding which we were, we accepted and participated in last year. They are asking us to re, not reapply, but resubmit to them that we are going to participate again this year. They provide us with public education and outreach programs, and they do all of this as required by our EPA permit for a small municipality stormwater discharge community. And we get that permit from the EPA.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pocorni?
Actually, Mayor, so, directly, I guess I'm a little confused, and so please excuse me and bear with me, but we are paying the sewer district and we are paying the soil conservation, water conservation district $5,500 to do what?
We are paying the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District $5,500 to provide us with public outreach and public education programs that make us comply with the Ohio EPA's requirements for our stormwater. And they're the agency doing it because the regional sewer district has named them as the responsible agent to provide those services.
So, so...
Actually, once they provide those services and we pay them, we get reimbursed for that service through the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Oh, so we...
So it's really no cost to the city.
Okay. That's wonderful to know. So that ends my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Weissman.
Thank you, Mayor. So we pay, the EPA requires us to have this, some kind of educational programs in the city. I understand the money, but what programs did we have last year that were...
Last year, they attended the high school over here, did educational programs, they provided us with brochures here in City Hall, and they did some investigation on stormwater inlets in the city. And assuming they provide similar services this time? Now, these used to be provided several years back. We were paying it. We were paying about $3,300, but we were paying it to the Cuyahoga County Board of Health to do these services. The regional sewer district has stepped in and split the duties between the Cuyahoga County Board of Health and the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District.
And can we, do we get to manipulate the kind of programs that they offer us, or is just we...
We can. We can. If we have particular programs we'd like to see conducted, we can make those recommendations to them.
So if we ask them to tell us about rain barrels or permanent pavements and other stuff like that, we can do that and sort of take a different kind of advantage than we've been taking?
Yes, correct. In fact, they did conduct a rain barrel workshop last year in the Service Department.
Okay. Was it well-attended?
Actually, it was pretty well-attended. I think they had about 20 people.
Really? You guys use rain barrels now?
We do now. They are provided through, again, the Cuyahoga County Soil and Water Conservation District. They sell them, explain how to install them.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cameron.
Yes. Mr. Pocorni, I believe our development officer had a proposal to, that allowed the city to apply for funds for a grant for public education on this subject.
Yeah, a grant that I believe he's working on may have had to do with the Cuyahoga...
Right.
Solid waste district, having to do with recycling.
Correct.
Completely different entity and different application.
But I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that there is a way for us to access public education funds through other sources with the county.
Yes, on different subjects.
Right.
This particular subject has to do strictly with stormwater issues.
Right.
The one he was looking at has to do with solid waste and recycling issues.
Right. Okay, so the point is, I guess we need to keep our eyes peeled for all the opportunities that might arise.
Certainly, always do.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything further? Do we have a motion? Or would somebody care to make one?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Weiss, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Just for a longer, right there.
Okay.
Given the fact that this $5,500 will probably be refunded, we could do a motion at that time to accept $5,500, or do we even need a motion to do that? Or should it be incorporated in this action?
You know, that's a good question.
What was the question?
I don't speak in this because it usually gives a lot of feedback, and it's hard for me to hear. It's a big echo.
The way this contract works is we spend $5,500 with one entity, and then another entity reimburses us that amount. So the question is, we're authorizing the expenditure. While we authorize the expenditure, at the same time, should we authorize the receipt of those monies coming back? Typically, when money is provided from an outside source to a municipality, they should accept it by some formal action. That's always been my understanding. So, for example, if someone wants to donate money, make a grant, whatever it is, the city should accept it formally. So, yes, I would suggest that in the motion, we include the authority to accept reimbursement.
So...
So they'll have, with your, a motion?
I would make a motion to amend...
Oh, there's a...
To amend the motion as stated to include acceptance of the reimbursement of the $5,500 from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Do you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so, again, just to clarify, Councilwoman Weiss has withdrawn her motion. Councilman Weiss has made a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the MOU to expend the $5,500, which will go to the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District and to accept reimbursement of that amount from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Councilman Sims has made that motion.
Councilman Sims, correct.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilman Rock. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, Ms. Thomas, will you take the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mrs. DeAmber?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item is item P, motion authorizing the purchase of a refurbished replacement engine for the Service Department, 2009 International 7,405-ton dump truck, number 34-8, from Cerny Motors of Painesville, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed $14,800. Mr. Pocorni, if you could speak as to this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of our five-ton salt trucks, which is rigged with salt spreading equipment and a plow. While operating earlier, about a month ago, it broke down. Cause was a lifter for the valves, which turned because a part broke in the engine, and that causes the lifter to ride out the cam in the engine, which ground off the cam. So the cam needed to be replaced. The head of the engine was sent out and x-rayed. It also has a crack in it, so it needs a new head. Then it needs a multitude of other parts. As we started pricing up parts, we reached about $12,000, and maybe we ought to look at getting a replacement engine, because a replacement engine will come with all refurbished parts on it, including the turbo for the air intake and many other parts. So it made sense no longer to look at the $12,000 in putting an old engine back together with old parts. So we went out and priced two different vendors, is all we could get. We actually tried to get you three, but we couldn't. The two vendors we were able to get prices from were Cerny Motors in Painesville and Jasper Engines and Transmissions of Indiana. The prices are listed there, $14,800 for Cerny Motors from Painesville, $15,264 from Jasper, Indiana. And I'm recommending that we replace the engine with the one from Cerny Motors.
Mr. Pocorni, were you able to determine if the Cerny engine had the reinforced lifters that we discussed?
The lifter holders is what breaks on this engine, and I received written confirmation from Cerny today that the replacement engine will have the fixed heavier-duty holders.
Okay, good.
So at least those won't break again within this engine.
Good to hear. Councilman Rock.
Yes, I'm looking at the quote here, and you have, there's a $4,000 quote for the total core charges. What is that?
That means you have to reassemble the old engine, which I showed you a picture of it here. We currently have the heads off of it, and most of the front of the engine off of it. We'll have to reassemble those back together at least, so that we can return the old engine to them as a core charge. And then they will, they will give us that core charge off.
Okay, so we don't have to approve it at 18, just at 14?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, how long will the truck be out of commission?
Hopefully, if we approve it tonight, we'll get the engine within a week or two, and it'll take them probably about a week to install it and hook all the radiator and everything else back up to it. So it'll look at about two to three weeks.
So we'll potentially get to use it for the rest of the winter?
Absolutely. We intend to get it back in service before winter's open.
Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Cameron.
Mr. Pocorni, what's the projected use, amount of use left in this vehicle?
2009, we'll use it for at least another five years.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, okay, thanks.
Now that it has a new engine, we're pretty much not pushing it that far. The rest of the truck is actually in pretty good shape. Has a stainless steel dump body and a fiberglass, partially fiberglass cap, so it should hold up pretty well.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a request. This is the kind of emergency occurrence that I think the administration should communicate to the council chair in advance, so... So, you know, at least that person is aware that we're going to be required to be requesting to make a fourteen-thousand-dollar expenditure and maybe share that information with council members so that if there are any questions or any concerns, they could be worked out beforehand. Hopefully, you know, at least to some extent. I just think it's a communication thing, so that's all I'm requesting. I happen to be the chair of services and utilities. So, and I, you know, I was not aware of any of this. But my question is similar to Councilwoman Cameron's question. And that is, we're going to put fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars into this vehicle. What does a vehicle cost?
A hundred-and-sixty-five thousand.
Okay. So in five years, we're looking to make a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar purchase?
That's correct.
If I could simply speak to your point, though, about communicating this particular memorandum, I will make an effort to pass this along sooner in the future. The memo that I got from the service director itself was dated January thirtieth. I was aware that the vehicle was out of service. And I may have communicated informally to some members of council my awareness of it and also the fact that I had seen the engine in pieces and the damage to the cam based upon the piece falling into the engine. But as far as the rest of this, yes, I did rely on the... By the time I got this, this was around the time we would have been distributing the agenda and the supporting documents regardless. So I may have been able to get it out maybe a couple of days ahead of the agenda when I got it, but...
Just here, I'm not really referring to this as a specific.
Oh, okay.
I'm just referring to it as a general way to hopefully communicate.
Sure, sure.
I think all the council members would appreciate knowing that something that falls under their committee responsibility, having a heads-up.
Okay. I will endeavor to do that. Thank you. Is there a motion to... Do we have a motion on the floor at this point? Okay, thank you, Kelly. Is there a motion to enter into the... Is there a motion to proceed with the purchase of the engine from Cerny Motors in an amount not to exceed fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Sims. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Wiseman. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Thomas, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pocorni. Item Q was inadvertently held over from the previous agenda. We did approve item Q at the last meeting, the meeting of January sixteenth. Item R, we've already addressed when Mr. Robinson and his assistant were here. That brings us to a motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and real estate matters. We do have a real estate matter to discuss in executive session, so I would ask that we entertain a motion to enter executive session after the conclusion of the director's reports, so that we can discuss that real estate matter.
Bless you.
Bless you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion. Motion by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a second by Councilman Rock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Thomas, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, very good. We will wait to hold that executive session until after the director's reports and council reports. So next, we have the director's reports. Finance, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to report that the auditors started working on the 2017 audit today. They asked me to reach out to council. If council has any questions or needs to talk to the auditors, you can contact Paul Giotowski or Joe or Bob McCann. And their email addresses are in an email that I sent out to you all today. So that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shan. Next is Law.
Very briefly, Mayor, a couple of updates for council. One is, you heard the mayor earlier this evening talk about codified ordinance Chapter eight-twenty. That is the chapter of our ordinances relating to fair housing and fair housing enforcement. As the mayor mentioned, there's a three-person committee that needs to be filled. And in addition, our ordinances call for a particular complaint form, which I've developed and am going to provide to the mayor tomorrow morning for his review. But it allows any complaining party to provide, in a very simple format, information for the city with respect to any fair housing complaint and to provide a description of what they allege occurred. And the form has been created. I think you'll be excited about this, in a format that will allow us to post it on our website and allow anyone who downloads the form to populate it on the site. So in addition to that, I just want to mention that in the last two, two and a half weeks, the city has received, well, I guess formally the way to say it is the city has been named as a defendant in three separate instances of foreclosure litigation. These are sort of, you know, your garden variety bank actions against individual homeowners in which the city is named as a party because either we have a lien on the home or the bank thinks maybe we could have a lien on the home, so they name us as a party. Our typical response has been to file an answer, asking the court to guard our interest. And the courts, in the foreclosure actions that have been resolved, have issued judgments in which they indicate that we are a creditor and that we will receive further notification if there's any money left over after the bank claims its interest post-sale. So there hasn't been any money to date, but we are filing an answer and then letting the foreclosure actions wind through the courts.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Public safety. Start with the chief of police.
Mayor, Council, just a couple of community-related matters I wanted to report out to you all. As part of Black History Month, I've been asked by a representative from Cleveland Heights University High School to participate in a panel discussion on February twenty-third. It'll be moderated by Blaine Dawson. I'm not sure what the entire topic is, but I'm happy to do it. I was told Roxbury School, but I'm not sure. I believe they mean middle school, so. Another item we're working on with the school, myself and Dr. Williams, the principal of the high school, I forwarded them an application for their criminal justice program in an attempt to try and get some of the students involved in the FBI Academy's three-day course for those who are interested in law enforcement for high school students between the ages of sixteen and eighteen with three-point-oh GPA. And I believe some applications were submitted. I'm not sure how many, but hopefully one or more of the students are accepted. It's a good program. High school has a good criminal justice program, and this will be a good opportunity for them. It's not a junior, it's the real stuff. It's just resting the three days. So I'm hoping that at least one or two of the students can get into it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
That's great.
Interim Chief Perko.
Thank you. Thank you for adopting the county hazard mitigation plan as well. I'm going to talk about regional efforts that the fire department does. If you happened to hear the sirens at the start of the meeting, I was made aware that the city of South Euclid had a residential structure fire. Due to our regional MABUS and automatic aid agreements, we were automatically responding to that. And also with the new joint fire dispatch at the Heist Hill Crest area, we received that notification at the same time as the South Euclid Fire Department does. And so due to that and our close proximity to where it was over the Cedar Road border, we were actually right down the scene first.
Very nice.
And as far as I know, there was no injuries or casualties or anything like that. That will make for eight structural fires that the department has responded to since the beginning of the year and ninety-one medical calls for a total of one-hundred-and-sixty-one incidents. The department has also applied for a couple of grants this month. One of them is from FEMA. It's an assistance to firefighters grant. We applied for fifty-five-thousand dollars for diesel exhaust extraction units. Basically, it's supposes that hook up to exhaust pipes of the vehicles, catches all the carcinogens in diesel soot, and routes it out through a motor that moves it out of the building so that it doesn't go into the administrative areas, both at fire and city hall and up into the sleeping quarters. And then we applied for two state grants, one for training reimbursement for money spent on training in 2017 and one for equipment moving forward in eighteen, in which we applied for for fire laws.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for interim Chief Perko? Councilman Wiseman?
Not a question for Chief Perko, but for the administration. We passed a year and a half or two years ago in the aftermath of the FEMA grant, some ordinance that required grants to go through the administration before they were submitted. I don't know whether that's still happening. I wasn't in favor of it at the time, but it got adopted, so I just want to make the administration aware that that's...
Okay, I was not aware of that ordinance.
It's kind of screwy, and I just want to make sure that we're either in compliance with that or to get rid of it. I mean, I think it's a great idea that the administration is aware of all the grants and everything, but I know we passed that, and it's... I don't know how it affects these efforts. I just...
Well, I...
We should look into that to figure that out, I think, before we...
I appreciate you raising that.
The grants are fantastic, I think. It's been wonderful the way the firemen keep doing this. I think it's great. But we did... It was a pretty lengthy discussion we had about a year and a half ago or something like that.
Oh, yes, yes.
But I don't know how it affects these efforts or if it...
Well...
We want to sort of tie that up.
In this instance, we probably wouldn't have been able to apply for the grants because the grants were brought to our attention in fairly short order. And we... Interim Chief Perko worked quickly to get our application in on time. In order to have... By the time we were aware of the grant and given the deadline, we would have had to have called a special meeting in that instance, if that's what is required.
I don't think it called for council to approve the efforts. I think it was just... I think it's... The vibe I remember what is basically said that the mayor had to personally approve the grants.
Oh, well, in this instance, I did approve Chief Perko proceeding before he did it. So I guess we should look at the ordinance and see what the requirements are and make sure that we are either, one, complying with what we have set forth, and then, two, if an adjustment needs to be made, review it accordingly for that. Mr. McConville, will you assist us in that?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman Wiseman, for bringing it up. Okay. Thank you, Chief Perko. Okay. Public service. Mr. Pocorni?
I don't have much to report tonight, but I'll give you a little update on snow and ice control. We've been called in over eight times now on overtime events along with daytime events. We are currently approximately halfway through our salt for the year, and I anticipate that we will be at one-hundred-and-ten percent of the ODOT contract. If you remember, when you approved the ODOT contract, it had a requirement that you purchase at least ninety percent, and you can purchase up to one-hundred-and-ten percent. We will be at that one-hundred-and-ten percent this year. And hopefully, that will be enough. I have mentioned to the finance committee earlier that we were having some difficulty getting the salt, but hopefully, the car guild will get those deliveries moving along and we'll have our orders fulfilled into the Cleveland Heights Salt Barn soon. Water breaks. Most of the water breaks that I reported last time we were here have been repaired. There are still two of the valve leaks, Laurelhurst at Washington and Summerfield at Green Road that they have not repaired. Those require a little different crew because they have to go down, disassemble the main and replace the valve that's in that location. So they've been holding off on doing that, and those leaks haven't been causing any real damage other than icing on the road, which we've been staying on. One new leak has started on Fenwick in the twenty-four-hundred block. And it looks like it might be a broken hydrant lead off of the main where the hydrant connects to the main. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr.... Oh, Councilman Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pocorni, there is a patched area on Sillsby just west of Milton. That's just starting to go up the hill on the north side of the road. It's like about the size of a metal plate. It's been, I don't know, since before the winter, there's a pile on there. Sometimes it's ticking, sometimes it isn't. Is that on your radar?
That is on my radar, and we are going to have to find some break in the weather at some point to dig those holes out and pour concrete in. We currently have, I think, six of those that we have to do.
Whose is that? Is that ours? It was like the water department's?
That is ours. After the water department's done digging the holes and they backfill them, similar to the one on Sillsby by Miramar, which they just recently did, we allow them to settle for some period of time, then we come back, cut the pavement around it, do a clean cut, dig it down the depth we need to fill the hole with concrete.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pocorni. Next, Building Commissioner, Mr. McReynolds.
Hey, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Since last time, I can tell you that on January twenty-third, I did a limited visual observation of one of the properties of the unit. I will discuss with you in more detail at the executive session. And I've also brought copies of the report that was forwarded to Patrick Grogan Myers, who asked for the inspection. And I don't know if you have copies of that, and I apologize for not giving it to you quicker, but it's not a very long report, and we'll be able to go through with it then. In addition, the three projects that have been approved by the ARB concerning the Velfair community have had their plans approved. This includes the ramp at Building D, the demo of Building G, and an annex, a new building that will be attached to the existing garage. That has been approved. Now, the big project, the creation of the Building G, the new Building G, has not yet been submitted to the ARB for approval. Last time I talked with the architects, they're thinking sometime in the spring. So these other three projects hopefully will be beginning soon and sometime in the spring, we'll have the proposal for their new building. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Okay, Community Development, Mr. Grogan Myers is out ill, but I do have a brief report that I will give on his behalf. We've received word from the county that there will be a new round of demolition funding opening up in the next several weeks. Applications likely will be due around mid-March. Commissioner McReynolds and Mr. Grogan Myers are creating a list of properties that are eligible for demolition. They will evaluate these homes based upon condition and status with the court to ensure we are not demolishing homes that can and should be rehabilitated. After we have this list assembled, we will send it to the building committee and Chairman Wiseman, and we'll ask council for declarations of public nuisance at the next council meeting. If there are any questions or if council would like us to consider specific properties, please email Mr. Grogan Myers. Thank you. Council Committee's Building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a pretty involved building committee on, I think, January twenty-third at the new public library, which is a very attractive space. I will tell you, we met and had a... It was very nice. I would encourage people to go there if you want to. The building committee made several recommendations, one of which was changing the new...
the new fourteen-seventy-five vacant building ordinance, which we approved today. The other was, the committee voted to permit chicken coops as a special use permit for the year two thousand eighteen in University Heights as a test of sorts to see how it works, to see how, if there are problems. I'm looking at the South Euclid ordinance and will work with the law director, this is probably a surprise to him at this moment, to put together this new ordinance for the next meeting. We thought this meeting would be a little too optimistic, and I'm glad we had the back. But the idea is that the chickens will be for personal use only. No one's gonna be selling their eggs or having chicken soup because they have chicken coops in their backyard. We've had several presentations by the, some interested citizens, more than one council meeting, one council meeting and more than one building committee meeting, so we've done quite a bit of research about it, have asked a lot of questions about it. We spent a lot of times talking about the parking situation on Built Bushnell Road. It appears as though about fifty percent of the houses on Bushnell are rental homes, which is probably more than double what it is throughout the city, but the parking is becoming a problem for the residents. We have a couple of gentlemen who show up at the meetings who have talked with a lot of the homeowners on the street, so they represent really a larger base than just the two of them. But the committee voted to have a no parking situation on Bushnell Road from Renford to Warrensville Road between two and six P.M. This wasn't the only, this was the best idea that we came up with. We talked about a number of things, possibly permits, possibly time limits for the amount of parking. We discussed with the residents when the parking was bad. For them, the issue is, it's dangerous to pull out of their house because the cars are squished in between the driveway aprons on Bushnell Road, and it's hard to get by as well. So, the committee came up with prohibiting parking between two and six P.M. because that's when, according to these gentlemen, the students get back from class and leave their cars there for the rest of the night. And then on Renford from, at the T where Bushnell hits on the, where Renford goes from the dead end of Purvis Park over to, over to the velv- the velvwaar connection. The idea was, if we just forbid it on Bushnell and don't say anything about Renford, we're just pushing all those cars over the Renford Road, and that's where they're gonna be. So, that's a recommendation also for the mayor to do. We had a discussion about point-of-sale inspections and the timing of point-of-sale inspections, and we also talked quite a bit about the moratorium for, the moratorium that the mayor proposed at the last meeting, which is a moratorium, I'm sorry.
On the three unrelated residents?
Yes.
Okay.
And what we might do and how we might change the section. There were four suggestions as to, I will say, most of the people at the meeting were not in favor of the moratorium and are interested in seeing it continue. I'm sorry. I stated that wrong. Almost nobody's in favor of changing the ordinance from three unrelated residents to have it be more than three unrelated residents. But we talked about the moratorium, how you're changing it, and how we might give, possibly give that section more teeth, one of which is to convince, to increase the yearly fee. I think it's around two hundred dollars now. Is that correct? Two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars now? We had one suggestion to add a poison pill so that if there was a large amount, if there was a fourth person found in the residence. One is to renew the permit every year without a new inspection, but to double up basically on the, on the fee. Now, it's a one-year, it's a two-year fee. You pay the two hundred and fifty dollars, so it's a... We determined there's about four hundred and fifty properties, there's about nine hundred properties, nine hundred rental properties, I think. Is that right? That would be four hundred and fifty a year. That's right. We also talked about the possibility of including John Carroll University with discussions and a go-forward procedure for how to deal with students, how to deal with them, education programs or whatever. We also, I get to revisit the form that the landlords fill out when they get the rental permit. If you recall, Mr. Mayor, at the first meeting of the year, there was a gentleman there who had four residents in his house, and the permit that he showed us was a, could be confusing, so the idea was to sort of make that a little more straightforward to let the landlords know unequivocally that this is the way the statute is written and this is how you have to behave. And the last point that we talked about was trying to adopt some kind of sidewalk program whereby we could get a contractor to agree that if the city, however many pads of concrete the city cited during the year in their annual exterior inspection, that if you had one contractor come in and say, he could do all the work on the street, it would be a lot cheaper for the residents to get their concrete done. Just, this is an estimate, but it's about five or six hundred dollars to get one pad of concrete done on your street. But if everybody on the street needs them done, or so many want, then the contractor, if he knows he's gonna be there for two or three weeks, he could charge less money. Hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars, it would be a lot cheaper for the residents. People'd get, more concrete would get finished, the residents wouldn't get it with such a fee, but the idea, the, forty, the building commissioner indicated that forty-three residents citywide got hit last year for, for having concrete issues. Couldn't tell us how many different pads of concrete there were, but if we could adopt some kind of program like that, the city has a program, has had a program like that in place for a while. It is ineffective for reasons that we can discuss at another time, but it's ten to nine, so...
Ten to ten.
Believe everybody, it's ten to ten.
Yes. And just to that final point, I spoke with...
It's ten to nine somewhere.
Mr. McReynolds earlier today, and he's going to look into the possibility of a program like that, as well as contact a couple of neighboring communities that we know have programs like that to compare notes and maybe not reinvent the wheel.
Yes, that's excellent. Everybody was in favor of that, by the way, so as soon as the information comes back, I'm sure that council will adopt that item.
Okay, very good.
That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Wiseman. Civic information, Councilwoman Cameron.
No report.
No report. Finance, Vice Mayor Pardee.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance committee and the citizen finance advisory committee have had three meetings to review the budget, the last of which was at six o'clock today before our council meeting. We've heard from department directors and chiefs, the police and fire chiefs, the service and finance directors. We will have two more meetings unless we need a third after that. One will be for the building department and community, the community development department. The final meeting will be the mayor explaining his part in the budget and the changes he is suggesting. And any final questions? We should have the budget on first reading at the March fifth meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Governmental affairs, Councilwoman Weiss.
No report, ma'am.
Okay. Recreation, Mr. Earl's not here. Is there anybody who is able from that committee to speak about the recreation?
No.
No.
Okay, no report. Okay, safety, Councilman Rock.
For safety, no report, and for the rebranding efforts, I just wanna thank everybody for approving the contract or the proposal for Guide Studio to begin the rebranding process. I'm very excited to get this started.
Indeed. Okay. Service and utilities, Councilman Sims.
No report, ma'am.
Okay, committee the whole, Vice Mayor Pardee, is there anything you'd like to say with regard to that?
Yes. City council and the mayor will have a retreat on February twenty-sixth from five-thirty to nine-thirty. We will be discussing priorities, our future vision for the city, and coming up with specific action steps for the next few months and then through the next year or so. The location is to be determined at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other business before the body, we have the executive session to enter. I'd like to thank all of you for attending the meeting this evening. Executive session is not on film, so if Mr. Manders would end the video at this time, that would be fantastic.